I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver and Ms. Robinson. Thank all of you for coming to this call meeting of the mayor and the board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Lenora?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
All present, let the record show that a quorum is present for this meeting. Again, thank you for coming. We had a couple of special things that we need to do at this meeting. I need to make some announcements. First, we're happy that everybody participated in the election before last. We need to prepare ourselves for the incoming administration and our new legislators who will be serving us. We need to be constantly aware that we need to remind them of their responsibilities and we need to be proactive. This is going to be a unique time in the history of the state of Louisiana. A lot of folks will be in Baton Rouge who are there for the first time and we need to be vigilant, vigilant to be sure that we keep them aware of their responsibilities. As we talk about elections, the city of Bastrop has an election coming up. We have three cent sales, three, one, three cents in sales taxes in the city of Bastrop. Some of our sales taxes are dedicated and some of them are general. We have a general sales tax that's up for renewal on the 17th of November. That's a one cent sales tax that has a ten-year duration. It's a ten-year life. One of our sales taxes, one of our sales tax propositions is unlimited, but this one is, has a limited time period on it. It's a ten-year tax and it's for general purposes. This one cent sales tax will provide revenue for all of the services that we do. Mr. McKee was doing some, some numbers. Can you come up a minute? If you remember, I don't know if you brought that with you or not, but Mr. McKee was doing some, doing some compilation of data as relates to it. What did you find? One cent brings us in about what?
About 1.6 million dollars.
Okay, 1.6 million out of approximately 11 million dollar budget. And that money is evenly distributed, as I think we talked about, through all police, fire, public works, administration, helps to pay our sewer contract, airport, everything that we do?
Yes, sir, everything that we do.
So, that would represent a little bit more than a 10 percent shortfall if that sales tax were not renewed. Now, there are limits as to what the city budget can be used for, as I appreciate it, as far as dealing with tax issues. We can't take with using city money, we can't take positions, we can't say vote yes.
No, sir, we can't.
With city money?
No, sir, not with city money, we can't.
But we can buy, and we have those of you who've been here for a while, we can buy ads in the newspaper and in the media and, I would assume signage, that are informational in nature?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
And we have, we have done that. What this board of all the persons and mayor have done before, what we've done before is that if the body wishes to do so, and this is not something that's, this is not a pressure thing, but if the body wishes to do so, it can, individually, we can make contributions and those ads and advertisements and publicity efforts can be paid for by us as individuals. It has been a practice, I believe, Mr. Hamlin, haven't we endorsed taxes before?
We have now. We're paid for individual, as a group.
Right.
We're paid for advertising, for our endorsement.
Okay, and I don't think it's beyond reason, Mr. Lenora, I think we've done resolutions as a body supporting tax issues. I mean, I keep referring to these two gentlemen because they've been here.
Right.
And over a period of time, so those are things that we can do, but I think it's incumbent upon each of us as members of the board of all the persons and mayor and those people who are on staff and those citizens who are listening and, and, and watching us in our activities, it's incumbent upon us if we want us to be able to maintain at the same level of services that we're providing, that we encourage, well, first, we go out and vote ourselves, those of us who live in the city limits of Bastrop, and, and those of us who don't live in the city limits of Bastrop, those of you who don't live in the city, you need to encourage people who do live in the city of Bastrop to go and vote. And for the ongoing, at the same level that we are now of our activities, we need that support. We can't afford not to have it. Mr. Hamlin?
Uh, Mayor Hawken?
Yes, sir.
One point, 1.6 million dollars for one cent sales tax?
Yes, sir.
And you keep saying to, to keep going where we're going. Did we not discuss at one time, going to the public to ask for an increase in either in millage or something in order to maintain where we're at because what we've been collecting over the years, last few years, that 1.6 million dollars is not going as further as it used to? Did we not discuss that one time?
Well, we did talk about the possibility and there is some investigation going on to talk about adjusting millage. We're at the constitutional maximum and, yeah, we're at the max right now on sales tax, so if we made any adjustments in revenue, it would have to be with millages. There is some research going on right now, some studies being done by our financial advisor looking at what we can possibly do with millage, with the propositions to talk to the public about increasing millages, but that will be after we get this going, but you're absolutely right.
Okay, I thought we talked about something.
We definitely have.
One other question?
Yes, sir.
In reference to the newly elected officials, so the Aimworth?
Walsworth.
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 Right.
Have you met him?
I, I know him.
You know him?
I know him, we've dealt in, you know, general.
I don't know how many other council people have talked to him, I, I never met him. Is it, is it possible that, well, I guess that's illegal for all of us, for all of us to meet with him anyway?
I, if, if, I think I can follow your lead, would you be favorable to inviting him to our next board of all the persons meeting, week after next? Or did you want to do something in a less formal situation?
That would be nice, but I would think of something in a less, less formal.
Okay.
Situation where we could actually sit down and talk, but then again, you can't do that, can we?
Unless there's a committee which is made up of less than a quorum, Mr. Lawrence, is that appropriate? Yeah, if we, if we had a legislative committee, a legislative committee which was responsible for talking to not only Mr. Walsworth but our future representative and our, our federal U.S. senators and congressional delegation, legislative committee would be the body that will be responsible for being sure that we were legislatively represented. Thank you, Mr. McKee.
Question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, is, is it appropriate to invite him, if he can, to come to our finance meeting before our regular meeting?
If that's.
The finance meeting is a committee of the whole, is it not?
It is.
Would it be appropriate, that's a public meeting, it would be appropriate?
Okay.
Mayor Hawken, will you, will you see if, if he'll be able to come up just for us to, to meet? I don't know, have the other council member met him?
No, I have not met him. I, I was thinking along those same lines, but I guess I had something else in mind. I was thinking inform maybe a committee from the chairman, police bureau and whatnot, but the idea you have is a good idea.
What, what if you want to do with, with the chamber or whatever?
I think Ms. Robinson and Mr. Gordon are nodding that they have met him.
What about, what about Betty?
I, I met him at some functions, but did not talk to him in detail.
Well, I guess everybody knows me, you know.
I've, I've met him and only had brief conversation with him. I haven't, I don't know him that well or his background.
Well, you know.
Mayor, I think it'd be to have advantage if we get to know him and, as well as he get to know the rest of us.
Whatever, whatever way we've known him before has not been as, as senator from our district. We might have known him as representative or known him in a casual setting, known him as a candidate, so it is appropriate that, that we have some interaction with him as, as we should with all of our, Ms. Robinson?
I met him and had a brief conversation with him, but I did not ask for money yet, author.
Okay, let me, let me take that as an assignment that I will establish contact with him and see if his schedule will allow him to come and meet with us at our finance committee meeting on second Thursday of, of November. My other announcement to you, and thank you for your participation in that.
Thank you.
My other announcement is the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development has sent us a notice saying that they are going to do some road construction on, on, on Louisiana Highway 830-1, which we know as Harrington Van and Pleasant Drive. As I appreciate it from my staff, they, they're surveying and getting ready to do plans. One of the things that I'm insisting on as it relates to this project and others as well, that, and, and we, we've been having, we have meetings constantly with, with staff and relevant bodies, but we had a meeting, was it yesterday before? Yesterday, with our engineering firm, Representative Zavilla Water, Representative Public Works, Representative Administration, and, and in an effort to be sure that we saw the big picture, we want to be sure as it relates to this project and street projects and sewer projects that we all on the same page. We had a situation a couple few years ago where we did some street work and after we did the overlays, we came back and we had to do some sewer work, so that meant we came back and we had to not destroy it, but we had to cut into some streets that were newly done, and our efforts are not to do that again because it, it, it rhythm, flat out messes up stuff. So, we'll, uh, we'll be, we're talking to DOTD, keeping them aware they're inland with our schedule and all, so there will be some construction going on. We're in the middle of several sewer projects right now. We've signed off on substantial completion of the streets and we're finishing up that, but there are sewer projects going on in cer, in various sections of the city of Bastrop and it's some inconvenience to some extent, but citizens are not, will not, and cannot be prevented from having access to their property, even though there are, on some streets, a tractor might be on one end and they might have equipment on the other one, if somebody needs to get in and out, the police and the fire department need to get in and out, they will be allowed to do so. So, if any of your constituents call and say they're having problems, they can't get out, that's not to be done. We've had conversations, Mr. Jones, with the on-site supervisor that we pay for to be sure that people are not unduly inconvenienced, and I use that term unduly, and I think you know the, the meaning that we have. But please be aware of the election coming up, encourage people, and we'll be talking in a more informal situation about how we plan to react to it.
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon?
In relation to your announcement on DOTD's overlay or work on LA 830, you mentioned Harrington Van and Pleasant Drive, did they include any parts of McRae Street in that?
No, no, they just, the specificity was just that, and I'm hoping that they will have that in their cycle extremely fast because that's a heavily traveled volume-wise and heavily traveled weight-wise street.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't know if they even meant, did anybody mention McRae in their plans? Well, let's investigate and see where McRae is in their sequence of coming up.
Mayor Hawken?
Freeman, have you heard of anything? Okay, Ms., Ms. Robinson?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. While we're speaking of that, it has nothing to do with the state, but it does have to do with a railroad crossing at Cypress, you know. I still have my letter of more than five years ago that they promised us they would have that crossing fixed and they haven't touched it. Can we get in touch with them and show them a copy of the letter and say where, what are you going to do?
I'd be glad to if you'll share that with me and let's work together on that.
Okay.
We'd be more than happy to do that. Item number four on our agenda is resolution number 071222, a resolution to apply for state financial assistance to the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Mr. Lishfield is here with us and we've kind of done this before, this is the same one, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And we found out that that was a technicality. We, we traditionally, when we advertise for stuff, projects, federal projects, we advertise in the local paper, which is our legal official journal, and we advertise in the Monroe paper, but we're finding out, and we were reminded that when there's a state project, it has to be advertised, and I guess the advocate is the official journal of state of Louisiana. So, this resolution has given us the authority to apply for this assistance and advertise in the Baton Rouge, it's not the morning advocate anymore, it's the advocate, is that what they call it?
Yes, Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge Advocate, so I need, I need you to adopt this resolution, please.
Make a motion.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion?
I second.
Ms. Robinson and Mr. Gordon jointly second that motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no. The ayes have it. We have someone, we're not ready to make announcements yet, are we? Mr. Lishfield?
I am.
Okay, we have some pending extremely positive information, but we'll be making that at the appropriate time. Item number five is resolution number 071223, a resolution authorizing, ratifying that lease purchase of a Lee Boy 635B motor grader from Louisiana Machinery Company, Inc., under state contract pursuant to the terms provided for in the written contract documents and addenda thereto referenced as attachments under separate cover. That's a lawyer's statement if I've ever seen one.
Yeah.
But what we're doing is, we, we have to buy a road grader. We have a road grader that's probably.
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty, that's.
That's a good one.
That's, it lasted well, but we need to have a ceremony, but we have a lot of streets that have open ditches and shoulders, and, and I know you're familiar with going down streets when it's raining and the water, it's, can't get to the ditch because the shoulder, because of just natural accumulation is higher, and we feel like this is a good investment in, with the previous piece of equipment, I don't know if they bought it new in nineteen fifty, but that's fifty-seven years that it lasted, if this one lasts anywhere like that, they might be using it for another purpose for me, but we need your authorization and adoption of this resolution so that we can process, proceed with this, this process.
May I make a motion that we adopt resolution 1223, number 071223?
Mr. Lenora makes that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Oliver seconds his motion. Any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, and the ayes have it. Item number six is discussion and action on airport engineering firm. We, we, I mentioned to you before that we were coming to you with this, we had the contract, Mr. Lawrence had the opportunity to peruse it, there were some considerations that we, some adjustments we needed to make on it. The firm sent us a contract, it was in their favor, so we needed to review it, submit it, resubmit it to them for their review and agreement, and that contract has come, and we, we are still maintaining our relationship with them in engineering. We have a lot of work that needs to be done from streets to all kinds of design and sidewalk programs and all, but I feel that it's necessary and based on plans that we have, that we have a firm that specializes in, in airport kinds of projects. They, they have the expertise, resources to help us get the funds, and most of you know that the things that we've been doing at the airport, other than day-to-day maintenance and paying Mr. Lishfield's salary in basic maintenance, we've been able to do it through federal and state grants and, and programs, and we're moving to another level, that we need another level of expertise. So, as I said, we're not dissolving our relationship with them, but we're adding this team on, it's, and in this group on as part of our team. They are the Baton Rouge and Houston, is our, is it Houston, Baton Rouge and Houston, and I feel comfortable with it, so I need your permission to enter into an agreement or contract, I've forgotten the name of the firm.
Um, I can ask you.
I remember, at least the owners were, passed all the unreasonable names, so it doesn't come to me right off. LPA?
LPA, yeah, and we, we have the contract available for your peruse, so it is, they are legitimate, recognized and, and all of that. I just don't have a name, so if you trust us.
Which city are they in?
They are the Baton Rouge and Houston. They're multi-state.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mr. Hamlin does.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. Before we do citizens' comments, I need to expand the, the agenda for a couple of items. One relates to property in the industrial park and the other relates to liquor licenses. If I can get a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to expand this agenda.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion?
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. Mr. Lawrence, would you come forward, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr..
For everybody's consideration, Mayor, there is a resolution, a new resolution, it's number 07-1224.
Okay. Everybody have one?
Yes.
Take this one, this is supposed to be yours.
You have one? We need another copy, just.
Take this one.
Hang on a minute, I see what I got.
I'm good. Everybody just got one? Ms. Robinson, Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
The purpose of this resolution is to address an issue that was brought to my attention formally on today. It was a matter that really started out being discussed earlier. I was sent some background information on it yesterday and some extensive information on it today by the Snellings Briard Law Firm out of Monroe. All of you may be familiar with the CPAC property in the industrial park. Apparently, there is either a, a transfer of ownership that is about to take place involving that property or an activity where perhaps they're going to receive some financing or something that's going to have, that, that is going to be impacted by the title or the current status of the title on the property. When the closing attorneys were looking at the chain of title, they noted that the city of Bastrop has in its favor what is known as a right of first refusal, where before the CPAC property can be sold to anybody else, it has to be offered back to the city. And that issue makes title what we call unmerkable, meaning that if CPAC wanted to sell it to someone, they could not without coming to us, and it also creates an issue regarding financing. So, merkability and financing are the two issues. The closing attorney said something to me briefly about apparently there had been something, an attempt to execute a waiver of that right, but there is a question as to whether or not that waiver was done correctly.
I see.
So, this is a, a housekeeping matter, if you will, that is designed to eliminate any questions or issues that involve the chain of title by eliminating the city's right to, of first refusal, meaning now that CPAC will be as matter of record with the adoption of this resolution free of having to offer this property back to the city.
Now, we did that, and we, we've done that on all of the property that we have been selling in industrial park because we want to be sure that the owners at that time wouldn't buy it, and then if they decide to sell, sell it to somebody who was going to use it for a purpose other than industrial utilization. And I, and I gotta be careful because I can't remember if I've been talked to in confidence, but as I, as I appreciate it, CPAC is selling to someone and the someone that is being sold to will still be using the building and the land for manufacturing purposes, which fits our, our desires. Does that make sense when I just say it?
That's true.
So, to me, it's a legitimate, we have no, no reason to not allow the property to be sold, and I know too that by us doing this action, the new owner will be able to, in an unfettered manner, be able to sell whatever they want to, right? Because we're relieving ourselves of any connection to it.
That's right. Now, in the discussion that we had on today, this property does have restrictive covenants.
Okay.
Which says that it cannot be used for non-industrial purposes or purposes that are not consistent with what we're trying to do at the industrial park.
Help me with this, we had a situation with some residential covenants, and my appreciation is that covenants have like a twenty-year life or something like that?
They do, and, and that life can be shorter if you have what's known as a non-conforming use and you don't go and stop them and enforce adherence to the covenant.
Can, can the covenants be renewed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, it's, it's incumbent upon us then to pay attention and at the end of whatever the twenty-year period is from the time that the industrial park was first developed, that we renew the covenant to keep them in place so that we can have some, does, does it make sense what I'm, what I'm saying?
Right.
So, we can have continuous, I don't mean control.
Right.
But have some voice in the utilization of property. So, that's something that we need to put a pin in, staff to remember to review and renew.
Yes, sir.
But the request is that we, Mr. Lawrence, that we, this resolution number 071224 is to, and this, this one is done right?
That's right. To authorize you to act on behalf of the city and executing what paperwork needs to be executed and to do whatever else needs to be done to waive.
Okay.
Any right of first refusal that the city has on this property. It is, it is specifically described, and I just want to put this on the record, as Lot 7 of Block B is in boy of the culture and industrial park, unit number one. It's the same property, there was a transaction involving the same property back in December of 1998.
Okay.
And I'm going to annex this to the final resolution.
And, and this is the CPAC property?
That's right.
Where the CPAC building is, they've been here for, what, they've been here about ten to twelve years now?
This, I know this transaction was done, and the one I'm holding was done in ninety-eight, so.
Okay, that's pretty good.
I thought it might have been an expansion or something on this, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how long they've been here.
Okay, any questions?
I'm.
Mr. Hamlin?
CPAC going to sell to this company?
Yeah.
And CPAC will no longer exist?
CPAC will, not in Bastrop, CPAC will not have property in Bastrop, they'll still be in Montgomery, Alabama, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Tuscaloosa, where they were. They, if, if, just to help, and helping me too, they had a market for their product over here, and they were doing business, but they were transporting the big rolls of paper from the mill here to Tuscaloosa, and they were cutting it and converting it. But they found out they had a market, so they decided to open a factory here. This is the family, this is the group that came here looking for the old single-service building, and they were trying to find a single-service buil, building, and they stopped at Kentucky Fried Chicken and they met somebody who showed them around and, and showed them the city and showed them where the building was, they found out that that building wasn't available, but they were so impressed with the hospitality of the community, they decided they wanted to be here. So, they came in, bought property and built. So, Mr. Hamlin, a long answer to your question, I, I'm pretty sure, I don't know, I don't think they're going to still, they can't use that same name, but it'll be doing the same thing, hiring the same number of people, as I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence, the covenant that you were speaking of is what preserves the city's interest in having the operation to continue what we are relinquishing now, to continue.
Yes, uh, as, I, I, I know at least in my mind, the reason why we had a right of first refusal, among other reasons, is so that we could sort of control who got the property and, and what they would use it for, and, and that is really the same thing that the covenants, the same purpose that those covenants perform.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay, are you ready for action?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Oliver makes the motion that we adopt resolution number 071224?
I second.
Jointly second by Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Robinson. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Freeman, we have some liquor licenses. Are these renewals or what?
Yes, sir. I have eight that will be renewals, they're all off-premises only license.
Okay, so this is kind of early, huh?
Uh, well, it usually takes about three months for all of them to.
Go through the process?
Go through the process.
Okay.
Uh, we've got Stop and Save, 818, 1405 South Washington, Class A retail dealer. A retail dealer. Walmart Supercenter, number ninety-eight, uh, Highway one sixty-five, Class A retail dealer. Porter House Liquor, eighteen fifty-one, North Washington, Class A retail dealer. Porter Speed Mart, thirteen oh one, North Washington, Class A retail dealer. Hester's Jiffy Pack, seven forty-one, Collingston Road, Class A beer only. Discount Tobacco Outlet, fourteen sixteen, East Madison, Class A retail dealer, and Pinky's Quick Stop, ten thirteen, A-Rant, Class A retail dealer. They made all the qualifications, and I recommend they be approved.
Mr. Freeman recommends that these, these renewals of, of applications for liquor licenses be approved?
Where is Porter House?
Porter House is on North Washington. It's the last one going out on the left.
Mr. Draftel?
Right.
Who was that first one you called?
Stop and Save.
Okay.
Fourteen oh five, South Washington.
It's at those every station.
Okay. Can we do them all at once?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we go ahead and adopt these, uh, liquor license.
Mr. Mr. Lenore makes the motion?
I second it.
Mr. Hamlin seconds the motion, and the motion is to renew the licenses, the application for liquor license renewed. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. Before we get to citizens' comments, again, two, two other announcements that I, I want to congratulate, Miss Sandra Goldman. Miss Sandra Goldman attended her first Clerks Conference in Baton Rouge a couple weeks ago, and I think she learned a lot and had some unique experiences, so we appreciate her. Secondly, all, each month since Bingo Gold has opened, we have been getting the contracted amount. We've been getting the check for ten thousand dollars. Mr. Either Joe or Johnny Gilbert brings a check up and we deposit it, and they are, they are doing really, really well. When I say really, really well, they're, they're doing well by paying us our money, so what, what otherwise, we don't know. There are two other bingo parlors that have opened in Morehouse Parish, both of them outside city limits. Big Daddy's down on one sixty-five south, and then Lucky's on one sixty-five, four twenty-five Noah. As expected, it has impacted to some extent the participation at Bingo Gold, and I call Bingo Gold our video bingo facility because it is the only one in the city of Bastrop, and it's the one that we benefit from, and it's the one that we named the nonprofit organizations to participate in it. So, uh, and talking to, I visited the Gilberts today because I go by there periodically to see how they're doing and to show my presence. They expected this, this ripple effect, this blip on the screen. Anytime a new store opens, existing stores are impacted, but we feel that because of the location, because of the reputation that they've established, uh, they have security from the Bastrop Police Department, off-duty folks, uh, they have good workers there. We think that they're going to continue. Uh, we feel, and our position was, people are going to do gaming, it's legitimate and it's legal. We wanted to be sure that it benefited the public, that it exists in, and also because it's benefiting those nonprofit organizations, the six of them, and it's also benefiting the city of Bastrop. So just wanted to bring you up to speed there. Chief, have you had any problems up there at all?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So we're, we're really pleased that that, that has happened. Okay, is there a citizen who'd like to make a comment to this Mayor and Board of Alder Uh, and the last comment, uh, Mr. Ernest Floyd, Mr. Hatfield, and those others who involved in, Monica involved in, in our media telecast, they've done a good job. This is the third one, I believe, if, for those of you who want to review it. If you go online to bastropcityofbastrop.com, you can see the first city council meeting that was telecast. And I've, I've had a conversation today with Ms. Mitzi Quinn, who's the sponsor of the Bastrop High School Beta Club, and, uh, I'm in talks with them, and I'm going to see if they have, they have a responsibility to join community service. I'm going to see, uh, preliminarily, she has agreed that, and she's going to present it to the group to see if they're interested in coming in and operating our cameras. This will give them an opportunity to first be a part of government, to get new experience in media, and, uh, to give them that community service, uh, points that they, that they require. So we, we look forward to pursuing that further. Thank you, each of you for coming.
Mayor.
Mr. McKee.
Yes, sir. Did you get a letter from the, uh, fire tree regarding to, uh, getting permission after I've submitted?
Oh, I did. I, I did. That wasn't on the agenda, was it? Okay. We have a, we have a grant for fifty-four thousand dollars, is it? Fifty-four thousand dollars through Homeland Security, I believe, and, and that, I did sign the letter. I didn't know that that was, I was signing it with the expectation of putting it on the agenda, and please forgive me, Members of the Board of Alder Persons, this is an agenda item and we need to take action on it. I need your authorization to go out to bid for equipment for, is it building inspection and fire department? It's computer equipment and peripheral equipment and, and a vehicle that would be used in building inspection, fire prevention, and fire mitigation. Uh, this is all through a grant and is fully funded by, through the grant, so I need your authorization to go out to bid.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you expand the agenda?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
Okay, then.
Make a motion for approval.
Mr. Hamlin makes it?
I'll second.
Mr. Mr. Gordon seconds Mr. Hamlin's motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it.
Mayor Hawkins.
Ms. Robinson?
Go back to the televised council meetings. I don't know if y'all have gotten any feedback or not, but apparently people are watching because I've got some very good, um, results from it, telling us how much they enjoy it and that they're glad it's there, that they can see what's going on without having to come down here.
Well, good. And that means that we're fulfilling our purpose, and, and I think each, you all know